I call to order and announce a quorum is present. Uh, we have asked um. Alternate Commissioner Gabriella to come and sit in place of. Place five. I'm calling you to order planning and zoning commission. Call special session Tuesday, February thirteenth. Two thousand twenty-four. It is. Six forty-four. Public comments, non-agenda item, public comments, white cards. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda items related to topics for a length of time not exceeding three minutes per person. Agenda item, public comment, yellow card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda items. Combined for the length of time not to exceed five minutes total per person on all items except for public hearing. Comments on public hearing items must be made when it is. When item comes before the commission and then not exceed two minutes. Per person. Not, no action or discussion may be taken. The by the commission during the public comments on non-agenda items. First up, we got Mr. Robert Batai.
I used to be an A V guy. Um, yeah, thank you, sir. I appreciate being here. My name's uh, for you guys, I pronounce it Batai. Sometimes at the council, I pronounce it Robert Battle. I grew up as Battle. Okay, um, and I appreciate you guys coming here because February is, of course, in Maynor, it's known as Black Eraser History Month. Did you hear that? Black erase our history because that's what you people are helping happen. Now, if I had to grade you guys, I wouldn't give you an F. I'd give you an incomplete. You guys have no honor and integrity whatsoever. I think Felix, maybe you're out of your league. I don't know. The comprehensive plan is a total fiasco. It's totally full of lies. In a second, I'll tell you some of them. And the fact that you approved it in the first place was total avoidance of your duty. Now. In brief. Julie said she was a Bell Farms Planning and Zoning rep. We don't have zoning reps by departments or districts, okay? Well, actually, she was their rep because she, when it was came time for them to do a townhome thing there or apartments there, boy, she was up in arms. She was out here, refused herself. She had panned outs and stuff. But when we're putting townhomes here on top of the cemetery graves, she's nowhere to be found. When we're talking about four hundred apartments by the homestead there, fifteen hundred people right there. She was nowhere to be found. And where were you guys? Out to lunch. This is a historic district. You won't find that word in the comprehensive plan because Scott didn't tell Freeze and knuckleheads, the developers. He withheld that on purpose. Where, why isn't that phrase in there? Because we want to turn everything to townhomes and high rises. When we talk about a downtown plan, I don't like anyone of you calling this downtown. It's not a downtown anything. It's a three-block long strip in the middle of a historic district, a little, it's just a little subdivision. The, well, the new downtown that I figured out goes over there. But these people can't even turn their heads far enough. They can only destroy things that are eight blocks square. The downtown needs to go over there, Scott, and you know that. This isn't even enough space for the parking lot for a performing arts center. You hear what I'm saying? I don't want you to beautify it with a bunch of little planter boxes. This is historic. This, the, pardon me if I'm talking too loud. People think I'm angry. Well, I'm just astonished. I sent out, I did my state of the city video. It's twenty-seven minutes and it's what the state of the city is. The mayor wants to do a mayor's ball, spend twenty-seven thousand. Okay, so back to Julie, about two years later, or two years ago, rather. She's jogging by. The Abachi Court, and she looked up and she goes, hey, Robert, we're getting a dog run. She went by and said, yeah, when in five years? Two years later, we still don't have one. You guys can't even put in a dog run and you're the planning commission? Oh, I forgot. No, I didn't mean to say that. You're a committee. You're his committee. When he wants to confuse you, he puts everything into one package, twenty-four pages about the parkland. When you guys sit here and you say, can we tell the developer where to put a park? The answer is hell, yes. It says right there in the codes. I've sent most all of you the codes. I think it's one four point, one four, two point or three point oh two, if I'm not mistaken. You can tell them whether you want the inlet fees or you want the parkland. And you can tell them, the phrase in the codes is, we reserve the right. Does anyone not understand what we reserve the right means? It's in the codes, plain as day. Scott evaded the answer. He knows the answer to that. Now, this whole question now, can we talk to each other? I've told you the answer to that ten times. It's in the Open Meetings Act. Do you ever read the codes? Do you ever read the Open Meetings Act? It's page twenty-four, I think. It says, here's how we do it. I've told the council, I've told you guys. This is so easy, it's astonishing. You have to create a message board. It has to be one click away from the homepage. Is that hard? You can say anything you want to each other on there. You can say, hey, I'm gonna support this because X, Y, Z. Well, no, I don't think that's a good idea. And blah, blah, blah. You can talk. Is that so hard to figure out? Really? Well, I'll tell you what, if we didn't have the laziest I T staff in town, they can't even put a second camera here. We have two cameras. Rockdale covers their meetings better than we do. For three minutes or five?
Oh, five.
Five, okay. Well, it was just getting going, dang. All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we got Craig Swinton. Craig.
I was gonna comment after. Can we do this, though? Uh, I mean, if during the discussion of the item, like with the regular agenda items, you have the applicant being provided the ability to give presentations and information to the commission, it's up to you if you want, if he's related with the item. If you want more information during the item, you could do it then, but you can also do it now because it's usually when you have comments on agenda-related items.
So unfortunately, you filled out a card to speak now, so we would have to ask you to speak. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Thank you, uh, Commission for Brad Meesaw. I was here to speak in support of uh, item number six, the rezoning of the tract owned by the Tomlinson family, uh, that Dominion Group has before you guys. And so my role in the uh, in the project has been representing the Tomlinsons, uh, who are selling the property to Dominion Group. And we had the, just a little bit of background, we had the property listed, um, I guess for about two years. Uh, and we're looking to sell the property as an industrial site. And about a year ago, um, came before the city council to talk about rezoning and had an agreement with the mayor as well as with Scott Jones here, the Economic Development Coordinator, to give it another year and market it as industrial. Um, and so we did that. We had a number of users that showed up that were looking for five acres, three acres. Uh, but the site being fifteen, uh, just didn't work for that use. And then we also had some users that were just looking for larger, like twenty-five to thirty acre uses. So we couldn't really find a good fit uh, for it as industrial. And so that's whenever we made the pivot over to the, the use that's proposed before you guys. So happy to answer any questions about that. Uh, I feel like we really exhausted the market. Uh, worked closely with Scott Jones, uh, to do that and believe we have, uh, you know, highest investor use and really good project in front of you guys now.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Miss Denise Martinez. You wanna speak against it? Ms. Martinez?
Yeah, but I filled out the form to talk on item six, like, I guess he did, but I guess he doesn't get to sort of. Hi.
You're not supposed to talk about public comments. It's an agenda.
Can we have you excuse that at his meeting, please?
Hi, I'm Denise Martinez. I live at twelve, two hundred Tower Road, and I do not want my property rezoned as it states in the agenda. So I want to talk about security. Uh, hopefully they're gonna address that. And sound like some security on that place. The subdivision on the other side of us has serious issues. And um, the Maynor Police Department's not able to take care of it because they have several other neighborhoods that are having the same problems. Um, traffic, not sure where they're gonna put the six hundred cars or so that uh, they're gonna pump out onto Tower Road and immediately to a stop sign. Uh, I live past the subdivision and the traffic goes past my driveway. Trash is a concern. Um, I'd like to ask that y'all ask them to put their dumpster or compactor or uh, trash facility closer to, to the industrial park. That is on the other side of them, uh, not closer to my home. The rendering that y'all showed had the dumpster closer to, to me. And I request that because we've all seen an apartment complex dumpster, trash compactor, whatever you want to call it. The week before and the week after the first of the month is a little crazy. Trash also is a concern that comes out of the subdivision through the triple channel into the retention pond and immediately into their property is um, horrid. And um, so you might say, well, they'll just ask the homeowners association to take care of that. No, they won't because I've asked the homeowners association to take care of that. And they won't come pick up their trash that dumps in. Uh, I currently run cap on this property. And so they won't pick up that trash. So it's going to flow through their property into their retention detention pond and then out. Flooding, they had said that their engineer, I believe, and David will correct me. Their engineer said, yeah, there's not enough, the pipes under the road are not adequate. Well, they were adequate before the subdivision, y'all approved, not y'all. It was approved by the City of Maynor that those pipes were adequate and um, so now we're gonna change them for, for them. So uh, I, I don't think that is, they should accommodate the water that's on their property. They only have one entrance or room, I believe, and again, David will fix that if I'm correct. They only have uh, room for one entrance. Fire code says they really need two. The fire marshal has said that uh, they can make special improvements to their property to uh, solve that one entrance problem. Well, that's kind of scary. Can't get enough fire trucks in there, even if they have the proper stuff. Well, I would hate for something to go wrong with that proper stuff. It's an apartment complex. So uh, and then uh, the address. I don't want my property rezoned, so yet, unless they force me out. So, um, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public hearing. Public hearing number one, conduct a public hearing on rezoning application for lot eight to ten. Blocks, block sixty-eight, town of Maynor. Lovely known as one oh four East Town Street for a single family, so. Suburban SF one dash one to townhome TH. Uh, we had, did have one. Do we just move on?
So uh, background for this one, so it is zoned SF one. Uh, there's existing uh, home on the property right now. It's, I think it's on lots nine and ten. So it being three lots, like with the current entitlements, that existing home can be removed and they can build three single-family homes. But with this request for a townhome, um, they're looking to have up to four units. So there'd be one additional residential unit. Uh, they would remove the existing home and construct a new four-unit townhome. That's the proposal. And it is uh, in compliance with the comprehensive plan, I mean, that area is planned as neighborhood mixed use, uh, which is a mix of, you know, denser commercial and residential uses. Um, and it doesn't necessarily need to be like the same building, like not every building has to be mixed use, but just as a district, um, having a mix of commercial and residential uses. Uh, and the proposed, you know, with the four units on the property being um, point three nine six acres. Uh, it comes out to ten units an acre, which is in the range of the, the, what the comprehensive plan recommends. They're representative here from the case. Okay, so there's someone here. If you wanted to invite them up to speak as well, they can fill out a speaker card. They may have additional pertinent information or question or answers for your questions, but uh, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them too.
This is the lot that sits next to the Jenny Lane Park, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, so the house sits there, used to be behind a bunch of trees and shrubs that were just removed.
Do we know if the plan for the four townhomes, uh, are they to be rented or sold? Or is that in here and I just didn't see it?
Sir, if you can come up to the podium. Uh, just state your name for me.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Carlos Moya, and I'm the owner of the property there. Yeah, well, we would like the permits to build a, uh, fourplex on that property, a townhome, and yeah, that will be rented.
Do you know the square foot per each townhome and the average rental price for each that you're anticipating?
Twelve to fifteen hundred square feet.
And the price range?
For the whole building?
For each unit?
Uh, we're estimating uh, a million two for, for the whole building.
What would it be cost to rent one townhome?
Uh, we're still working on that, depending on the market. But we're expecting anywhere from fifteen to two thousand dollars. It's gonna be a three-bedroom uh, apartment.
What is the building setback from Lexington Street property line?
The new one or the one right now?
The new one.
What do you mean? What is the setback? We don't, we don't, we don't have any plans yet. Yeah, we don't have any plans. We're just here to see what are we allowed to build in that property.
Thank you.
It should be fifteen. Remember, a streetside setback is usually fifteen feet.
Are there any restrictions? Because I know it's off Lexington and that's a really big, uh, really busy street. Is there any restrictions on parking? Because as we're building more there, I'm gonna make sure that it doesn't block the, the, the flow of traffic.
Uh, yeah, so they have a minimum parking apartments based on the number of bedrooms. So usually a three-bedroom house, and you round up, it's like four parking spaces um, per unit. Um, there required one enclosed parking space. Um, so the other three can be accomplished like on the driveways. But yeah, that, there, there are minimum parking apartments based on the number of bedrooms.
So uh, I guess my question along with my colleague here. So your parking would face basically the park, is that correct, not coming out on Lexington Street?
Uh, we like to park on the, we would like access through the alley and, and build the parking lots in the back of the unit.
And that's in line with what we're um, looking for in the downtown area is to have like fewer curb cuts and driveways on the streets and having the alleys used more. And so like, um, as I said, the garages would be on the alleys, but you know, their front doors would still face Jenny Lane and um, the street.
And, and would the maintaining of this parking and everything be done by the owner or would the city have to do it?
If it's a, like common lots, if it's replatted into one larger lot and the four units are um, are just rentals, and you know, no one actually owns the property, it, it would be on the property owners to have the maintenance. Unless, I mean, I've seen rental agreements that say they have to maintain the landscape, bring the yards back on. In terms of what the city would enforce, it would, it would be on the property owner, that they can pass that on to their, their tenants, but um, yes, uh, under a common lot townhome development, the property maintenance is on the property owner.
Wait, any more questions, Commissioners?
I move that we close the public hearing and agenda item number one.
Second.
I have a motion from Miss Leonard, Commissioner Leonard, to close agenda item number one. A second by Mr. Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Pose. Moving on to public hearing, item number two. Conduct a public hearing on a short-form final plat for the re-subdivision of the Maynor. Addition subdivision, three lot on thirty point eighty-six acres, more or less, and being located near the intersection of US Highway two ninety east on Boys the Ark Road, Maynor, Texas.
Sure. So this plat, um, it was originally created as one lot, uh, about that thirty-one acre lot back in February of two thousand twenty-two. And around that time, or in October of two thousand twenty-one, uh, it was zoned multifamily and medium commercial. So the frontage is commercial, the back, uh, what is it, twenty-six acres or twenty-four acres is multifamily. That multifamily part, it's been sold from the original developer who owned the thirty-one acres. And so this, this plat is creating the three lots based on the zoning boundaries. So it'll create one multifamily lot and then two commercial lots.
So help me, is, is this right at the corner of Boys the Ark and two ninety?
It's on the, the south side of two ninety, so right where Bodark and two ninety intersects, uh, right across the street from that. Uh, the southern boundary of it is against Carolon Way in Bell Farms. And then the, the lot lines you can see on the, the left side of the western boundary, that's New Katie.
I see that there's a drainage easement. Is that, should we have any concerns with like flooding and draining? Or is everything that they're able to build on it now will end up being the same as if it gets rezoned and split into three plots because already it can be built?
Sure. So with that drainage easement, um, but the, the multifamily developers proposing and working on is a two-phase development. And so the first phase is on the, the eastern side of the property, which is not affected by that drainage easement, and they're working with the Army Corps Engineers on regrading that to kind of align it a little differently, so they get a little more developable area on the, their phase two side. But it still remains as a pretty sizable drainage channel because that's all what comes off of like presidential meadows. It kind of flows through there. Um, they have to account for that, like the water that comes onto their property and then any additional storm, what do they add from their new impervious cover and they're, they have detention ponds at the southern end and throughout their project to account for that.
Where is the access for the lot one?
So they have a, well, their public street access is actually um, on the back end on Carolon Way. And then they have an access easement that they worked with, um, that's already been established uh, through the commercial lots. This lot was um, a little different. Um, it was created as the outcome of a settlement agreement that the city did back in two thousand twenty-one. So there were some accommodations made for that. So yeah, so technically the public street frontage is, there's the fifty feet of right of way on Carolon Way, but their, their access, their primary access is gonna be through an access easement uh, on the commercial properties.
So this item is nondiscretionary?
Yes, once you get to the, the, the action item on it, um, being the subdivision plat, that's been approved by engineers, it's nondiscretionary.
Are there any road improvements that they're planning to do to Carolon or is Carolon gonna, gonna connect all the way through? And if so, like, are they gonna have it go out onto two ninety?
No, so what they're planning, there is a connection, but it's um, like private that goes into their development, so it wouldn't necessarily be like a public right of way that people can travel through their property. But what they're, they're working with the neighboring property on the east side, uh, it's called the Ginsel Track. Which that has on their plans, which are currently going through right now, um, they're gonna be extending um, Carriage Hills Drive um, through their property to intersect with Bodark. So Bodark will become a four-legged intersection. And this property is working with them on an access easement, so they'll be able to go through their development to get to that public street that the Ginsel property is constructing. So people can get to the light to safely leave and make a, a left to go towards Austin versus having to cut all their cross two ninety to get into the turn lane to the U-turn. So people can get to the light to safely leave and make a, a left to go towards Austin versus having to cut all their cross two ninety to get into the turn lane, to the U-turn. Um, so we were working with them and advise them that they're gonna want interconnectivity between their developments. Mainly to help the, the residents of these apartments, um, navigate, um, and to get safely out onto two ninety.
Will that make another light on two ninety?
No, so the light's already there, uh, at Bodark, they'll add the, the fourth way to it, um, for the new street that's coming in, but the light already exists.
Will they be adding like a turning lane or is that pending actual like development plans submitted at a later time in a traffic analysis?
I might have to follow up with you on that. I believe as part of their driveways, Tech dot is having them put D cell lanes in. Uh, they're two-site driveways, but I'd have to confirm that it, it is through Tech dot, so that's why I'm not like super versed on it. Um, that's a, like a sort of a driveway permit that they're doing with Tech dot.
We have more questions commissioners?
As Mrs. Bell Farms, I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for agenda item number two.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard, a second by Vice Chair Commissioner Davis, all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. Moving on to agenda item number three, consider discussion and possible action to approve the minutes for January tenth, twenty twenty-four, P and Z Commission regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from the January tenth, twenty twenty-four P and Z Commission regular meeting. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Terry, a second by Vice Chair Commissioner Davis, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to regular agenda item. Consideration and discussion and past possible action on rezoning application for lot, lots eight to ten, block sixty-eight town of Maynor. Locally owned as one oh four East Town Street for a single family suburban SF one to town home.
So this was, you may remember the, um, yeah, that townhome zoning that's up the street here with the existing home on the property. Um, that they're looking to remove and construct a four-unit townhome development. So if you have any questions for me or the applicant, you can answer those.
I do have some concerns about this, um, request specifically just knowing that, um, it's right next to the park, um, and ideally we're trying to, you know, have less crime around and there have been some situations of crime in various parks around Maynor and, you know, having rental units so close to a park is a, a little bit concerning, I would say, just in terms of not as much, um, culpability as like somebody who owned a home would have, um, there might be a little bit more risk of increased crime in the park. My main concern also the parking too, um, those roads are very narrow, um, in that area. And adding more cars, even if it's in the alley is still a concern, especially if there's like issues with fire departments and how they can access um, the backs of communities if they need to put out a fire in the back of someone's house. Can they do that with an increased amount of cars in a very small alley? Those are my main concerns about this one.
So Scott, with things like this, when they build into the alleyway, do they have to build from Lexington to Burnet? Or do they just stop at the end of their property?
They would, we only require them to pave up to where they take their access. So yeah, it would just be behind their property. Uh, they wouldn't have to pave the whole thing. Um, and then for Commissioner Leonard regarding the fire department, um, and they only, the fire department, you know, requires additional access if it exceeds a hundred and fifty feet. That's sort of their maximum hose length. Um, so it'd be very unlikely that they would travel down the alley. Uh, our alleys, our alleys are only twenty feet, you know, a fire lane is twenty-six too, so it's, and our minimum paving standard for an alley is fourteen feet. Um, so that it's unlikely that they would go back there nor, I don't know if they would necessarily need to, uh, especially with, with the being on a corner. There's pretty sufficient public street access. Uh, we do prohibit parking on our streets if the pavement width is less than twenty-six feet, which everything here in the older part of town is, place rarely see a lot of cars on the streets here. We're fairly pretty good about notifying people that they're not supposed to park on the streets. Um, so for this property or really any, you know, they we've kind of worked with that to make sure they provide sufficient, you know, onsite parking. And then if they have a tenant or an owner who has more vehicles, you know, they'll just constantly be incited and, you know, told that they can't be parking in the street if they're, if that's what they're trying to do. Um, and unless like they want to come in and actually build out street parking, which we're seeing here in some other developments. Um, in order to have sufficient parking and, you know, handle their developments, they're, we have standards now for what on-street parking looks like. Um, so that is an option, um, usually we're seeing that more on our mixed-use developments than these type, but, um, the code just says if it, if the pavement width is twenty-six feet or less, there's no on-street parking and you can't park in the open drainage either. Um, so, uh, yes, if, if there were more cars than, you know, expected, then that may not be a the right place for that person to live, cause they'd constantly be being told their cars can't be parked where they want to park them.
So if I understand this correctly, Mr. Moyetta could currently tear down the house that's there and build three single-family homes, correct?
Yes, that's the existing entitlement.
And so the change in this to townhome would, and with the current plans that he has, it would just allow him to have one more unit on the property?
Correct.
I think I'm just trying to understand the rendering, um, because I know we've been talking about that there's going to be an alley for accessways. And I've seen the houses that have the garages built off the alleyway and I'm trying to match it to the, um, the image that's in our booklets that's up here, cause this looks like it's facing the street part. But is it actually facing the alleyway?
So can you walk up to the microphone? Yeah, the, the garages will be through the back, like just like that units, but the garage will be built through the back. That's not exactly, that's just like an example, that's not what we're trying to build, the, like, the way it looks there.
So this rendering has nothing to do with the sort of what?
No, cause we don't have plans yet or we haven't discussed what kind of building is gonna go there yet until we agree on something. I mean, cause we're not gonna go spend money on plans or all of that, we're, we're not gonna be allowed to be built there. And like she was saying about the park situation, uh, I mean, city just build a brand-new park across Walmart and there's a bunch of rental properties and apartments, so.
This area is, um, designated in, uh, the neighborhood mixed-use, land use. So what's the, the current percentage of residential versus non-residential? And how is this gonna, uh, help contribute to that, uh, percentage and, uh, the in-use for this, uh, mixed-use land?
Uh, it's a great question, um, and the plan overall would be like the district is fifty-fifty. Um, it's, I don't know off the top of my head what the measurement or what it is now, it's probably definitely leaning more towards the residential side. Um, we've done zonings like across the street over here for neighborhood business. So they can convert their home into, um, a business, uh, I think they want to do a hair salon and then the Blor House across the street from this was zone neighborhood business. Um, so there's no one living there now and they have plans in to convert that to a restaurant, uh, and you have Blue Bonnet and, um, so it may not be too terribly off fifty-fifty, um, but it probably has more residential in it right now than maybe the overall plan accommodates for. But, and with the neighborhood mixed-use, it's more of the, you know, the district having denser residential and commercial and with being townhome, it gets to that denser residential versus, you know, three single-family homes, you can get one extra unit or.
How close is this to the funeral home preparation?
Uh, that's three blocks north, so it's Jenny Lane, um, some residential houses and then, um, the Brown House or where the, the funeral services plan to be in Blue Bonnet.
So they're like Lane Avenue in Lexington area?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve agenda item number four.
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mayor, Mayor, and a second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor? Aye, opposed.
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda item number five. Considering discussion and possible action on a short form final plat for the re subdivision of a Maynor addition subdivision three lot on thirty point eighty-six acres more or less and being located near the intersection of US Highway two ninety east and Boys the Ark Road, Maynor, Texas.
Sure. So this item, it has been approved by the engineers, so it would be non-discretionary or we're requesting approval. Um, they are taking the single-cladded lot and replating it into three lots, uh, to match their zoning boundaries for the commercial and multifamily.
I move to approve agenda item number five.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard, a second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Moving on, uh, consideration and discussion and possible action on rezoning application for the Dominion Development one lot on fifteen point four-two acres more or less and being located at twelve-two-hundred Tower Road, Maynor, Texas from N one dash one light industrial to MF dash two multifamily dash twenty-five. Uh, commissioners, we do have Neil Row Mr. Duckett, Mr. Graham, Mr. Green, Mr. Bella and Mr. Nugent, all in here of support of this. I know we just had to read their names for the record to show that they are here in support of it. Um, I am at this time, I ask Mr. David to come up and give a presentation.
Give the presentation.
It'll be okay. Um, uh, Chair, Commission, thanks for having us today. Um, we were here at the January tenth, uh, meeting, I believe it was, um, and had some discussion on the proposed project. Um, and there was also some follow-ups, uh, we're looking to address. So this presentation is meant to reorient yourselves and then get into the follow-ups after that. These slides are just on the company as a refresher. So Dominion, uh, was founded in nineteen seventy-two or a fifty-year-old company. We're a large developer of workforce housing, which is housing that's developed primarily with an income restriction. Uh, in this case, it'll be sixty percent of area median income, which is about seventy thousand dollars for a family of four. Uh, we're in nineteen different states and we have two hundred and twenty properties nationwide. Um, and that's just kind of the summary of the company. Here's a geographical representation of the different, uh, areas we operate in, uh, Texas being the second largest currently and soon to become the largest. Really the main overarching point of the slide is that we're a long-term owner. So the properties that you see under the properties on four properties we currently own, but when we sell a property, it's typically about eighteen years. And this would be no exception to that, it would probably be closer to thirty years we would own it for. Um, also on the slide, it highlights our property management company and, uh, construction company, we're a vertically integrated company. So from the day we, you know, today we're in front of you to the day we sell the property, thirty years in the future, uh, we'll be involved with development, construction and. Be involved with development, construction and property management. And then it's more of a refresher on the, on the development, uh, this is the location, it's, uh, north of two ninety off of Tower Road. And this is our site plan, um, in terms of just the layout and the orientation of the buildings, uh, very similar to what we presented last time. This is a slide that gets more into the zoning and some of the things we've, we've discussed, uh, so the site is currently zoned for industrial use. Uh, we think it's a good use for the property because it establishes a buffer between the neighboring industrial and the single family that's adjacent to it. Um, as Craig said earlier, they've been marketing the site as, you know, for industrial use for quite some time, um. Haven't had any takers and, you know, they're thinking multifamily is the highest and best use for this property. Um, also meant to highlight, it's consistent with the comp plan, uh, the overlay for this area is mixed density neighborhoods, which MF two is a. A use that would be encouraged under, under that. Um, I did wanna clarify one thing because this is something that came up in the last, uh, discussion. We will have two access points, they're both off Tower Road, we were able to confirm with the, the fire department that it would, it would work for them. Um, it would meet their requirements, uh, we also did a, a TIA in advance of the last meeting. Uh, presented y'all with some of the findings from that and some of the improvements we'd be proposing. One of the questions from the last meeting was how do we, you know, does the TIA, um, address the, the Monarch subdivision that's going in on the other side of nine seventy-three? Does it include the early college high school and the K through eight school that are proposed for the area? We've updated the TIA to factor those developments because since they're not existing, we didn't initially, um, but now we are. Um, and we'll kinda get into the findings from that later on. Just an update on the, or a refresher on the unit, uh, mix and income restrictions, uh, we like to, you know, we say we're doing an affordable housing development. We like to make sure everyone can see that, um, the requirement is a component of our financing and it's a thirty-year commitment, there's no way, no way out of it for us. And that kinda goes hand in hand with our long-term ownership. And this is an amenity overview, um, we highlighted a lot of this in the last presentation, but. We strive to develop the unit and, uh, community that's no different from market rate housing, uh, development and a lot of cases above, above par. Uh, so I have, you know, stainless steel kitchen appliance, uh, granite countertops, private balcony, uh, laundry in the unit. Um, and we'll also have a clubhouse, uh, with quite a bit of amenity space and then also some outdoor amenity space. Another unique thing we're doing in this development that we don't think is, probably exists in Manor at this point is we're gonna have an after-school learning center. That's gonna provide tutoring services Monday through Friday, um, three hours per day for a total of fifteen hours a week. And we're gonna work in concert with, uh, Manor ISD and Compass Rose to identify like what deficiencies. Uh, they think their students might have and where they could benefit from our, from our tutoring services and that'll be at no charge to the residents too. And these are just renderings, um, we did have them updated from the last time to factor the bigger setback, um. On the, on the eastern property line. And I think you can see in this rendering, the trash to Denise's point is somewhat closer house, um, we wouldn't be having a site plan approved till much later on. This isn't a PD, this is just an MF two zoning, but we'd be happy to explore different locations for that. It, it's, doesn't make a difference to us, we try to locate it centrally, so when you leave the property, you would drive by it, but we're happy to, to move it. Just more renderings. So this is, uh, kinda like the, you know, the, the nitty-gritty of the presentation, uh, just following up on what we discussed last time. Um, and kinda what we're doing to address some of the points. So the first point is how will this impact traffic, uh, we try to boil it down to kind of. How many trips are being added in the peak morning hour and the peak afternoon hour? It's gonna be a hundred and twenty-four trips in the peak morning hour and a hundred and sixty trips in the peak afternoon hour. And then basically the point of this feedback was just to better understand, um, how the traffic, uh, analysis works and I think y'all have a memo in front of you. That's kind of a summary that our engineer put together, also our engineers here to answer any questions that might arise, but basically, uh, based on past experience. Our engineers had with the city of Manor and also just industry standards for traffic impact analysis. Uh, we decided to study the three intersections that are shown on the screen, um, and then we also went out on December seventh. Cause we figured that was, they figured it was a regular day with regular traffic patterns, it wasn't holidays, you know, school was in session. Um, and they studied the hours between seven and nine and four and six and they took traffic counts, uh, visually. Again, these are industry standard, uh, type things and based on previous experience, um, and also another key point to highlight is that. Um, the roadways we study connect to nine seventy-three, which is a text dot roadway. So we also pulled, um, information on the text dot traffic counts they keep that, uh, confirms that these are the busiest times, so. Um, another question was, does the draft TIA contemplate the new developments in the area or the nearby schools? Anything that exists currently would be factored in, uh, but we also worked with the city to obtain the TIA's, the Monarch subdivision and the local schools had done. Um, and we wrapped those into RTIA, uh, assumed the traffic counts that they expected to produce and also their mitigation efforts they were doing. Um, it did recommend one more update we will be implementing, which is a left-hand turn lane at nine seventy-three in Suncrest. Um, and basically the impacted congestion is, is the same, I think it went from two minutes to three minutes at that intersection. And right now I can, our traffic engineer can provide the exact numbers to you, but it's significantly more, so we would be improving the, the situation. Um, we were also asked if buses or pedestrians were considered in the analysis, uh, both were factored for. We, uh, determined that, you know, pedestrians right now are, are, uh, very minimal. Um, as one of the follow-ups from the last meeting, we also met with the charter school who communicated their hope to have more walkability in the area for a handful of reasons. Um, so we got with, uh, the city and sorta understood how they're approaching the nine seventy-three, uh, sidewalk, this Suncrest is in the county. So the city can't make developers do anything on Suncrest, but on nine seventy-three, the plan is to have developers put in sidewalk as properties develop. Um, and there's, there's some underway and some with plans, uh, but what we would be doing to contribute to that is as part of our stoplight, we'd be putting in. We would, uh, install a crosswalk that would be synced with, synced with the stoplight, so you could safely cross the street. Yeah, so that's that. More on drainage, um, we had drainage questions, um, so basically what we proposed last time is to. Uh, replace the culvert that's in the road with, or the pipe that's in the road with the culverts. Uh, basically the pipe, uh, it's twenty-four inches and it's undersized, so when it becomes full of water, it bubbles up and it overtops the road. The blocks, uh, or the culverts, they have significantly more surface area, uh, so when water will go through and it'll pass through and, and go under the road. Instead of going over top the road, it basically has more, more capacity. Um, another point that was raised was that, um, were we basically increasing the amount of impervious surface we could do? Um, by increasing these culverts, um, and the follow-up to that is basically it should be thought of in two parts, so there's regulations around. The fact that we can't increase the amount of runoff that occurs on the site, so when we go for a building permit, we'll propose solutions with the city such as storm ponds and. Other, uh, stormwater mitigation measures so that the runoff is, is the same as it is now. Uh, but what we'll be doing is increasing the capacity in the road so that it'll more easily pass under. So our impervious surface remain the same and it's, it's genuinely us trying to do something to fix a problem that the neighborhood's having. We were asked how much impervious surface we're considering, uh, fifty-nine percent based on the most recent site plan. And then how will the detention being handled, that's essentially what I just, um, covered, but, um, basically we'll size, size the detention pond to mitigate any increased runoff. And we're currently planning two detention bonds on site. Um, more on safety and security, is there sufficient emergency access? We spoke with the fire marshal, they indicated our two access points, we're gonna have two access points are sufficient. Um, we're no longer, you know, originally we were thinking it might be a workaround if they weren't sufficient, was to have emergency access into stone water. We're no longer gonna be pursuing that, um, it won't be a component of our plan. Um, will you provide garages or a gate, um, we thought garages was a really good idea, the issue with garages. Is when you install garages, they're bigger than service parking spaces, so it reduces the amount of parking. Um, which in a lot of cases forces people to park on the street because maybe you don't have adequate parking. Um, and that makes security worse, just because, you know, if you're parking on the street, it would be easier to break into your car in a lot of instances. Um, this is one we were requested was providing a gate, um, we're not gonna provide a gate, uh, in our experience earning. Lot or owning a lot of properties, managing a lot of properties throughout the US, uh, gates break very frequently and they become a safety hazard. They can be half-open or there can be metal sticking out and they can hit people's cars or people can run into them. Um, what we will be providing is a stubout for a future gate, uh, so that if there's complaints about us not having a gate. We would have the infrastructure in place to install one, um, that being said, we've also, uh, taken additional security measures. So, um, earlier we met with, uh, Chief Pips with the Manor PD, um, and one of the things we discussed with him was how they have a virtual. Virtual license plate reader, um, that we can install like in the, in front of the property at the entrances and exits. And basically when cars come and leave, it can snap a picture of their license plate, so it makes it pretty easy to track them down if there is a crime. Um, and that's something he's been pushing a lot for, um, and he, he basically referred to it as a virtual gate, so that's something we would be putting in. Um, and then just to highlight the other kinda security measures we'll be taking, we'll have, uh, twenty-four hour monitored security cameras. Uh, we'll have LED down lighting, um, and we'll work during the permit phase to identify appropriate. Um, areas to install those, like, you know, in the corners of the property or in the dark, in the breezeways and any area where there might not be as much light. Um, and then we're also gonna have fob systems, um, instead of keys on each of the doors, which it's, it's more easy to pick a lock than. A fob, so. Um, we're getting towards the end here, so having met with the charter school, uh, we met with the vice president of schools at the charter school. Um, something that's important to understand that they, uh, express support about is that their school serves primarily, uh, minority. And in a lot of instances, low-income, um, students and their kinda stance is that they think a quality education should be available to anyone. Um, and that's, you know, they expressed their alignment with us because our, our, one of our big goals and it, part of our mission is to provide, uh, housing. At, that's above market rate or at market rate to people who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it, um, so they expressed their appreciation for that. Um, they also discussed how, uh, in some way their budget and their financial position kinda works on enrollment. So they were excited about the opportunity for increased enrollment at their school, um, and then I think I tou- touched on it earlier, but they. Uh, mentioned they, you know, hope we could build out a sidewalk around their school and improve the pedestrian situation, we'll be, um, contributing to that with a crosswalk. And also building our portion of the sidewalk. Um, lastly, will the traffic light be synced with the others, like the one at the high school, um, yes, it will be synced. Um, and then will you correct the address, so we, uh, we requested nine-one-one address immediately following the last meeting. Um, it took a while due to processing times, it's now been assigned, um, however, in talking with, uh, Scott. Um, in order for us to update the agenda with the new address, we would have to submit a new application and essentially go through the process again. Um, we're happy to make sure this is included on future, uh, presentations and future documents. Um, and also in listening to Denise, her main concern is she doesn't want her property zoned, we were also able to review the zoning ordinance with our attorneys. Um, and the zoning ordinance doesn't state an address, it just has a legal description which would tie directly to our, our property, um, not Denise's. No problem, um, and that, and that's it, um, our traffic engineers here with us as well as, uh, just our civil. And they're available to help answer any questions too, but so am I, so.
So, I, I had two questions and you, you answered the second one, you got the address changed for Miss Martinez. Um, but my first question is, did I hear you say you wanna put a crosswalk on nine seventy-three?
Um, yeah, across nine seventy-three, so right now the school has a sidewalk that kinda dead ends, um, on nine seventy-three. And then there's a subdivision which we're not totally sure about the timing, but they have an agreement with Text Dot that they're gonna build the sidewalk down nine seventy-three. So it would be connecting them, making sure people could cross safely.
Are we okay with people crossing nine seventy-three?
I mean, they would do it at a, a signalized light that has a pedestrian phase.
Sorry, it's, sorry, it's across Suncrest, it's like, it's going, it's going this way, not. The Suncrest in front of the industrial facility.
So, so you're talking if you come out of Tower Lane, you're going from, uh, been living in Manor for a while. You're going from Mister Tomlinson's old shop basically to the school.
Exactly.
The school to. The Chevron.
No, yeah, correct, yeah, sorry if that was confusing them.
So basically it would be if somebody walked out of y'all's building to get to Compass Rose. That's where we're crossing, we're not having somebody walking the shadow of the elementary.
No, ex- exactly, so they would walk in front of the industrial and then make a left across the crosswalk and then walk to Compass Rose.
So if, if I'm reading this correct, we, we have. At, at seven thirty AM, we have a hundred and forty-nine cars going through nine seventy-three, is that correct?
Ben, you wanna, do you wanna speak to some of the traffic questions, I would try, but.
We just need you to state your name, sir, please.
Yeah, hey, my name is Ben Platt. Um, is this the page you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Text Dot does these counts once a year and these are straight from Text Dot, so. Which time were you looking at, I'm sorry, seven AM?
Yeah, this, it's, it's shows seven thirty AM, uh, southbound nine seventy-three, you'll have a hundred and ninety-eight. Through that means, I mean, I'm assuming that means going through nine seventy-three. It, it's on that. The third page, if you can switch over, Mandy.
Yeah, I think it's two more pages?
One more. One more, there.
Correct, yeah, that's northbound through one forty-nine, sorry, southbound through is one seventy-seven?
Uh, I'm sorry, at four thirty PM through five thirty PM. Is that what that one is, Mandy? There it is. So nine FM nine seventy-three southbound, it says through a hundred and ninety-eight.
That's just for fifteen minutes at the bottom of that one. The totals are kind of in that top left corner, that's the worst, we call it the peak hour, that's where the most traffic is.
So the top left corner?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So question, does Text Dot do like, if you were to turn left off of Tower Lane going towards nine seventy-three? How long that would take?
So you're heading westbound and you take a left?
Yeah, you're going southbound on Suncrest.
Okay, and you go towards nine seventy-three, sorry, will you repeat the question one more time?
If, if, if you're leaving your apartment complex and you turn left on Suncrest. How long does it take you to get from that point to that light at nine seventy-three?
I'm not positive off the top of my head how long it would take, it's something we could run. I think most people probably turn right and go to nine seventy-three and Suncrest, especially with the new signal. Well, once the improvements are completed, sorry.
And you're putting the light at nine seventy-three in Suncrest, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and Scott, we're putting a light at the senior high school, is that correct too? Is that one ready to go?
Uh, it's there, I think, um, from what I heard, something might have been installed wrong or maybe it's just still waiting on power, it's not activated yet. But yeah, there is one there, um. And then, yeah, so they would work with Text Dot on that signal. It really wouldn't necessarily be, I think they coordinated with the city.
Will there be a light at, at Tower and Suncrest?
There will not be a light at Tower and Suncrest. Yeah, I believe there was a concern that we talked about earlier with if you're going westbound on Tower Lane, there's a stop sign right there, right now. Yes, correct, so I think the, honestly, the biggest improvement, the light's great, but. We're gonna move the stop sign from that approach down to Suncrest on the northbound approach, cause there's so much more traffic on Tower. Um, road coming westbound, so now you won't have to stop if you're heading westbound. Um road coming westbound. So now you won't have to stop if you're heading westbound on Tower Road. You'll just go straight through. Intersections kind of, you know, but they want the, the intersection's kind of configured funny, right? So they're just gonna straighten it out and make it into a T intersection that honestly should be safer.
Twenty-something years ago, that was.
Exactly.
There was, there was nine seventy-three wasn't where it is now.
Right.
So we're talking, hold on, Ms. Martinez. Um so what you're talking about is, so if somebody's coming from nine seventy-three on Suncrest. And they're coming off of Tower Lane, who stops?
Suncrest northbound. Will stop.
Is there gonna be a stop sign put there?
There'll be a stop sign put there. It'll just be moved, right? So right now it's on the westbound approach and it'll be moved to the north.
Right, so right now it sits off of Tower Road.
Correct. Tower stops and now Tower won't stop.
Okay, so now that's straight. What always, I think, used to happen is they would just go straight.
Yeah.
So now it's going on Suncrest when you come around that curve.
That's who, that's who could stop. And that also facilitate the cross.
In the binder, there was a, an exhibit for the proposed layout.
Correct.
And Tower will go all the way up to nine.
Seventy-three. Yeah, the first time it'll stop is at the signal at nine seventy-three.
Sorry, that's the folder they passed out.
Yeah. That one was honestly a slam dunk. There's so much more traffic there.
So my last question and I'll stop bugging you guys.
No problem.
Um so I know we say that funny looking wide there. Are y'all going to? I know some people have a hard time if you're coming off of Tower Lane looking to that left. Where you're putting this stop sign? Are we improving that part too? Not making so much of an embankment going down?
We haven't actually done the design yet. We're just honestly, the, the biggest improvement is moving that stop sign. And then we'll make improvements to facilitate that basically. So we have that layout, but I think that's it.
The right-hand turn will just be a yield to the right and they're gonna turn before the stop sign hits? Before you hit the stop sign?
I think it could be a yield or a stop sign. It'll be up to whenever it's actually like designed. I mean, this, it looks like a design, but it's just laid out. But it could be a stop sign or a yield. Kind of looks like a stop sign to me, just because the angle, you have to turn so far back the other way. It seems like a stop sign would make more sense. Usually a yield is when you're making like a less than a ninety-degree turn.
Yeah, cuz I think the current issue there is that um people are confused which.
Who should stop, yeah.
Even though there is a stop sign.
Yeah.
Are we just gonna create the same problem in a different direction?
Some, some new striping, immediate, you know, a little bit of a uh curb and everything there, new stop signs and everything. I think should help that problem.
There, I have um a thought and this is off of the, as much as of traffic. But I know there was a concern brought up earlier about um location of the trash facility. Um and I guess for Scott, is that something of, like a stipulation that we could put in? Um cuz it seems like us, like us low left that might very much help like the homeowner in this case. Or do we have any jurisdiction over that?
Uh not through zoning. Um. Yeah, I mean, we, we regulate that, yeah, dumpsters have to be screened and be in dumpster enclosures. Um they're permitted to encroach ten feet into setbacks, certain setbacks, not buffer yard setbacks. Um but we don't, it just says, they're supposed to be on the side or the rear generally of properties unless there's some mitigating factor that kind of presents. Prevents that and like the openings aren't supposed to face right aways, but you know, we don't, yeah. So there's that, that was the criteria. Um so it'd really be up to them if they wanted to move it from the side of Mrs. Martinez's property to the side of the industrial. Cuz either way, it, it meets the code requirement as it currently is. Um I think that may be something we look at, uh if you wanted, like, you know, if it's Jason's residential, maybe that ten-foot encroachment isn't permitted. Or something along those lines, just, yeah.
So what's the procedure here on correcting their address and getting that in the application? Um how does that affect um what part of the, in the process that they're in now? And um having to do that, how would that affect everything else?
Sure. Yeah, so it, it, we don't change the um, like the agenda language. And because this was a postponement from the last one, we couldn't update it, so we had to keep it the same. So as uh David had said, they have gotten their verified address. So when they apply for their site plan, it'll have that address, their building permits will have that address. We internally, we can update the zoning application. It's just um this specific zoning case has that twelve-two-hundred. Cuz that's how it was originally applied for and was notified as. Um but the, as you said, the, the zoning ordinance doesn't have the address. And if it did, I would, I would change it there, of course. Um it just happens that the public notices had twelve-two-hundred, so that was. Well, we had to keep consistent through the case. Um yeah. But the, the applications, the rest of the project would be under their new app, their new address, the correct one.
Does the incorrect address affect potentially who would have gotten notice of the zoning change?
No, um so we do a three-hundred-foot buffer around the boundary of the property. Um and I mean, you can see that on like the zoning map, like, you know, their property is the one that's highlighted. And that was where the three-hundred-foot, you know, determination was made.
And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you send out the notices, it shows the property on it, correct?
Yeah, the thing on the screen is actually the notice that residents received for which property was the subject property. It, it does have that address on there and that was the application. Shouldn't verify it a little better, but probably would have actually found out it was unaddressed. But um you know, anyone who received that, you know, they may have seen, hey, that's the wrong address, but the property is, the correct property is highlighted.
On the increased traffic, um your presentation says a hundred and twenty-four trips for morning peak. A hundred and sixty trips evening peak. Who, who comes up with those numbers?
Uh so we, we basically determine based on past experience with the city of Maynard. And also just industry standard traffic times that seven to nine and four to six are typically the biggest times. And that was also based on Text Dot data too. Um and then we set up cameras at the intersections that we're requested to study. Um and then they count them like with the cameras visually.
So the one twenty-four and the one sixty are just estimations from y'all?
They're counts by uh, so we go, they go through a subcontractor, they hire out a company that specializes in taking traffic counts. And then they set up the cameras and then they take the counts. And Ben, if you wanna.
I get it. I just, I'm a lawyer. I, you go to law school, so you don't have to do math.
But I, I almost, I almost went to law school, so I understand, but now I do a lot of math, so.
But my math at three hundred and twenty-four units with just two cars per unit, just say. Comes out to six hundred and forty-eight additional cars. But we're thinking only a hundred and twenty-four leave to go to work in the morning?
Yeah, I, I can explain it. So it's um, so we were talking kind of a little bit about two different things. So that was explaining how the traffic counts are taken, but you're talking about the projected traffic, I think. So um it's based on, it's called ITE. Uh it's kind of just the national standard for projecting traffic counts. So what they do is they go to study a bunch of developments. And they say if you build this many multifamily units or this many single-family homes or anything you could think of, this is how many units you can expect. Um and they give you an equation to use for it. Um I hear what you're saying, right? W- when you have two cars per unit and everything, but you know, that doesn't count for someone stays home. And I, not everyone leaves within the same hour. Some people might go to work at six AM and some people might go at eight AM. And that's just the average based on um how many units, basically. So I didn't make that number up. Some other engineers did make that number up and I think it's, I think it's the best guess that we have is, is why it's used.
Yeah, yeah.
And um follow-up question here. Um so you limited it to those three intersections?
Correct, yes. Those are the three that we looked at.
Okay, and so um what was the stipulation there on just limiting to those three intersection? And not looking at the follow-on onto uh further on to nine seventy-three? Um continue on to two ninety. What was, what was that?
Yeah, generally with the development this size, we're gonna intersections within a mile, three-quarters of a mile. And especially where we're gonna make turning movements. If you're a, you know, you added some through trips, you know, through a signal or through stop signs. It's not gonna make delay a, a lot worse. So basically we're looking like, how does everyone get out into the main arterial, is what we call them. So like nine seventy-three. So once you're on nine seventy-three, you're probably just gonna go straight through all the intersections. And you're not gonna feel a lot more delay. Um it is important to note, we did this TIA for you all. There'll be a follow-up, you know, official TIA with the city of Maynard as well. So this won't be the last look at it. Um we can always add intersections at that time to look at. But the reason we picked, to answer your question, the reason we picked those intersections, cuz that's how people are gonna get out and that's how they're gonna turn.
Sure, thanks for that um clarification there. Um yeah, whenever it is going through that official process. Um the TIA with the city, um definitely I, I um advocate for uh looking at additional. Uh intersections um follow-on uh coming through uh the two ninety and upwards uh past the high school area. Cuz um just getting on to nine seventy-three, it may take two minutes, but now that total trip to get to wherever. Um it, it wasn't just two minutes um added um on that piece. And um I think, so thank you for all the work that's already been done here, um looking at the traffic counts there. Uh I think what was uh, what could be added on there or maybe just clarification piece? Was that, that time component on there? Cuz it just talked about the amount of trips during the fifteen-minute intervals. And not an actual time for intersections, uh turn signals and things like that, right? So that time delay from whatever intersection to the intersection. There was a, like a previous uh question talking about like if you're taking a left to go on Suncrest, kind of that, that horseshoe, right? To get all the way on the other side. What is that time component at that light? Um you know, whenever you turn from um, from the Tower Road, right? How long did it take from there? And not just, it was fifteen, you know, cars in that fifteen-minute period? Is that something that you, you contemplated it or you had that information?
Um how long it's taking you to move on an uncontrolled stretch of roadway isn't usually something that's in it. TIA, we look at intersect, intersections typically. Um. Yeah, that's what, that's why it was done that way. We generally just look at the intersections.
So at that intersection of Suncrest and uh nine seventy-three wasn't looked at, but the other one was?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
We, we expect there's gonna be a traffic signal there and most people are gonna wanna get to the closest traffic signal, so nine seventy-three has to stop so they can get out.
Yeah, yeah. And that other one does have a traffic.
Now it does.
Right? And it's just how much time was added to that turn?
Right.
Um I, I think was a question, you know, that was asked, maybe not in this direct way. But what was that time added, you know, for um, for a vehicle? Um so yeah, I like to see that particular uh section of uh, of the TIA. Um whenever that is uh conducted and, and produced.
Absolutely.
Um I was about to ask a very similar question, um because looking at this, it does look like. The hourly count is expected to go up. Um if a hundred and twenty-four people are taking trips and at the peak hour, we're around a thousand people. Then this one complex is increasing traffic by about ten percent, ten to fifteen percent. And I would wanna see at least timing-wise, where do we sit now at our time? And does this mean people's wait times are also going to increase by ten to fifteen percent?
Got it. Yeah, but sorry.
Yeah, so or is, are they gonna go down with some of the improvements and?
Correct.
Analysis that I would wanna see.
Yeah.
So the number of people that are on these trips have literally little bounds, but the amount of time that people are on their commute. Is what everyone in that area cares about. I take that back to work every morning.
Yeah, yeah. Um absolutely. So yeah, just to step back. The perfect of, uh, the purpose of a traffic impact analysis is to look how traffic's gonna be. We're using twenty-twenty-six as our build-out. That's just a guess of exactly when it's gonna be done. So look at traffic, if this development isn't built, that's kind of our baseline. And then we come in and see, okay, how much worse are we gonna make traffic? That's on, I'm talking from this table here on the third page of the TIA draft memo. Um and then we're like, okay, I'll just show the traffic exactly on what's already there. How much worse is that gonna make it? And that's called the build-out. And the third um scenario that's shown on this table is we call it the mitigated. So the purpose of that is we're gonna come suggest improvements to make sure traffic is better than it would be if the development never came in. So that was the, um so that's the purpose of the mitigated and that's how we're getting those improvements. So you know, if you add a hundred and twenty vehicles, a hundred and sixty vehicles in a peak hour. Obviously, that's gonna make nine seventy-three and Suncrest worse. So you have to do something to that intersection to make it better than if we didn't come in at all. That's why we suggested the traffic signal. It's the same thing with the Tower Lane and the Suncrest, moving that stop sign will make it better than if our development didn't come in at all.
Is anybody else able to find that?
Oh, I'm sorry. We received this late in the, in the day uh before the backup was, was due to be printed, so it's not on there, but we'll, we'll pass it around.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um you said that there will be putting culverts under Tower.
Yep.
Any estimate of how long, like is there gonna be downtime where Tower is unavailable? To be used during the period of adding a culvert? And if so, you know, Tower is pretty, there's not a lot of alternates, right? It's not like Suncrest where you can go one way or the other way. There's Tower and that's really it.
Yeah, totally understood on the question, the concern there. I think uh Ben can answer the constructability.
Yeah, hi, Ben Green with Kimley Horn. Typically for a public right away, construction like that, they'll phase it. So they'll probably shut down one lane. They'll have some traffic control measures. Uh it will be, you know, temporarily, temporarily inconvenient, I guess. While that construction's going on, but they'll essentially build half the culverts first for one lane, repave it over, build the other section. So they'll maintain one lane the entire time. They'll have most likely people out there with, you know, stop signs, kind of dark, directing traffic. Uh we'll also do it, you know, attempt to do it in less peak conditions. So not during, you know, ideally the school year or, you know, busy hours, just to maintain that traffic, so. Uh but that road will be maintained the entire time.
And is there an estimate of how long in total that will take to complete?
Hard to anticipate, you know, construction, things can come up, but the goal would be minimize the duration that the road lanes would be closed. Cuz it's also expensive to, you know, operate those traffic controls. Uh I'd imagine a week, you'd have that construction done, uh if I had a guess at this time. Hopefully less, but.
That's a good point. Yeah, across our front edge, we're adding that middle se- center turn lane. So there could be a way to maintain two lanes open the entire time as we kind of build out the culverts, one lane at a time.
Thank you.
What's the mass amount of the culverts? Right now the type, I believe, is twenty-four inches and you're saying that's too small, which the city approved it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I can speak to that. That's fine. Yeah. A lot of times what happens, uh you know, essentially this came up earlier about the twenty-four inch culvert. Um I'm not even sure if that was approved through development. A lot of times what happens, these rural roadways, they'll put a culvert just to pass low-flow conditions. But they're never actually engineered or sized appropriately. Um as well was mentioned before with drainage. You know, by law, Texas law and code, we're required not to send off more runoff from our property than what's in the existing condition. So onsite, we will detain and ensure that no more water than the existing condition. onsite, we will detain and ensure that no more water than the existing condition leaves. The culvert situation is really a safety and hazard issue, keeping the water under the roadway versus what it does over top right now. So I think the existing culvert size is almost irrelevant. Again, that was built, who knows how long ago. Um, and again, not sized appropriately for how much water actually goes there now. So we're not increasing the amount of water that goes there. We're just simply making sure it stays under the roadway instead of going over top of it.
One more question, thank you for, um, the trash that comes from the other subdivision, um, Stone Water, or um, not Stone, Stone Water, sorry, I think they all get confusing. Um, the, the trash that comes in from, from Stone, I think it is Stone Water, um, that flows, is gonna flow into your property.
Yeah.
Um, are you guys gonna commit to dealing with that yourself since the HOA for the subdivision is unwilling to, to help with that?
Yeah, and David might speak more to it, but you know, a simple solution, really what's happening, there's a regional detention pond upstream of our site for Stone Water. That pond is collecting all the storm inlet and pipes from that subdivision. So if trash gets in the street or the gutters, it's getting wa- it's washing into the pond and then flowing downstream. A, a simple solution that we could probably implement, you put a gabion basket, you know, at, at our head wall. Essentially, we're gonna convey that water through our site, but maybe at the northern part of our property where that water comes into our site, we'll put what's called a gabion basket, which is like a filtration system. It captures all the larger debris, still lets the water flow through, and then that would be easy for management to, you know, clean once a week or, you know, however often they would need to, just to clear up all the trash though. Again, it could be a better solution, a situation than there is now where, right now, no one's responsible for the trash. There's nothing captured and kinda controlling it. Um, and again, that's something we probably would do regardless, just cuz we wouldn't want that falling through our site. Other?
That, that is something we would do. Also, another thing to highlight is we talk to a lot of folks like yourself sometimes and we develop a lot of property in this area. When someone like y'all goes and visits our property and there's a lot of trash on it, it makes us not look the best. And that makes business going forward very difficult for us, so we're committed to keeping a clean property. And that is an improvement we would do, so.
Kind of along those lines, besides that, that kind of trash, the fence around the property is gonna be, what kind of fence exactly?
It's gonna be a six-foot uh, concrete panel fence. It's gonna look like wood. It's gonna be wood-looking. And it's gonna be on all sides of the property except the frontage.
You, you may not know, is that similar to the cement wood fencing that's all throughout the Shadow Glen neighborhood?
Yeah, yep.
You know, there's a big lawsuit that's been going on for ten years about that?
Uh, no, we're not aware. Um, we, we like to design fencing that is uh, uh, easier to maintain and is durable and is also adequate, tall, like tall enough for like screening purposes. Um, I'm not specifically sure what the lawsuit's about, um, but you know.
It's, it's about the, at least that particular brand or whatever, if you're looking at it, just throwing it out there, it, it collapses and there was a, the HOA sued that company and it was in litigation for ten years and it's fallen down everywhere. Just take a look.
Okay. That's fair. Yeah, we uh, you know, we own a property in the area of uh, we maintain our properties and that's not something we wanna happen. If we have a falling down fence and we come to folks like you and we say we own property in the area and the fence is falling down, doesn't make us look very good.
I, I got one more question and, and like I said, I'll stop asking now.
That's okay.
When, when I, when I went home and, you know, I, I've been married to an educator for ten years and she saw that you guys wanna bring in the, the um, tutoring and I know you guys wanna accommodate teachers and first responders. Uh, one thing she, she, she told me to kinda consider is, uh, she looked through you guys' handbook and when you say this is the base pay, um, kinda be generous on the educator because educators come right out of college and one of the things is that their base pay is also put in with. Uh, we're also from the state of Texas, a football club gets paid a stipend. So those stipends go into that and so when you guys look into, hey, this is your base pay, maybe look at, what do you actually get paid without your stipends? So that way, it helps those educators and I, and I'm assuming first responders uh, look at that, but that was something she was mentioning to me and please look into that cuz I have to live with her.
Yeah, we, we can, we can definitely look into that. Our, our program is fed, federally regulated, so there are a lot of rules we kinda have to be within, but we'd certainly look into that, um, as we go forward.
I maybe have two more questions and then I'll be done, um, because we just thought this, but I was just wondering if someone could come up and explain to me some of the acronyms, LOS, what are these numbers actually representing?
Yeah, ab- absolutely. There's a lot of traffic engineering, um, yes, acronyms. So L, your first two questions, LOS is level of service. Um, basically tied to the numbers, which is seconds of delay experienced for the average vehicle during uh, the peak period. Yeah, so, uh, just a general level source A, LOSA is the best, level source F is the worst. So A, think wide-open road, there's, there's nothing in your way at all. And level source F, I mean, think about two ninety during rush hour, I think probably is uh, the best example um, here for it. Um, yeah, and just kinda walking through the table, anywhere you, you see red, that's that level of service F. Um, so once you, you know, you're already failing, it can definitely run away on you. I mean, I see, you know, a thousand seconds of delay in the build-out, or, or I'm sorry, in the no-builds. Um, so that's kinda before the improvements come in. And then once we put the improvements in, I'm seeing the worst, uh, you know, we're passing everywhere except for at FM nine seven-three and Suncrest, and that's having level of service um, F, but with, you know, a hundred and twenty seconds of delay instead of the no-build, which is nine hundred seconds of delay. So putting that traffic signal in makes it, instead of nine minutes, I'm sorry, nine hundred seconds, it's a hundred and twenty seconds of delay. And I, I, I will say, you know, once you start getting up really high like that, it kinda runs away. The, the models are really made for, you know, a, a little bit lower amount of delay, you know, two minutes, that, that, you know, is what you could expect, but nine hundred seconds, I mean, is a ton of delay in the existing, I'm sorry, in the no-build.
Alright, commissioners, I know we, we've talked to these guys long enough. We're probably on first-name vexes already with you guys. Uh, do you have any more questions, commissioners?
I will just say, um, thanks for explaining this. Um, to me, it looks like even with no-builds, there are places where the delay will decrease naturally without, without a build, without any improvements from you guys, without any, anything. So like, obviously nine seventy-three and Suncrest, the PM peak hour is ninety-three point seven, whereas what it is right now is seven hundred and fifty point two. So that's probably due to the light. There's like decreases happening without you guys actually being involved, but then there's also increases happening, um, too, right? There's more on Tower and Suncrest. There's less on nine seventy-three and Suncrest. So I'm assuming that's because of the light that we're implementing there. That's gonna happen whether you guys get involved or not. We're gonna decrease.
I'd say most likely.
Yeah. And then for the twenty-twenty-six build-out, that basically means that's if you built out your solution or your property without any mitigations.
Exactly.
Right. And which you won't be able to do because of TIA. So really, we shouldn't even look at that um, as a section because there is no twenty-twenty-six build-out without mitigations. Uh, that's impossible.
Correct.
And so then build out with mitigations, that is what we should really be looking at as kind of a comparative of what are we at twenty-twenty-six no-build versus twenty-twenty-six build-out with mitigations. Those are the areas where we should be comparing.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Alright, commissioners, any more questions?
So just to give you some feedback, um, this is really good presentation. You guys addressed everything we talked about last time. You have good renderings. You were honest and open about all of the things that you know are issues. I think you're having onsite tutoring is very rare. That's very nice and we want affordable housing. The only thing that I struggle with is the location. It's the only thing. Um, just because I really feel like industrial should be there and something that's not, you know, homes, especially a lot like high-density. Um, so that's where I'm so I just wanna be honest, you know, so that if you wonder why, why I might vote the way I do, that's, that's really it. But everything else was perfect and really appreciate all the effort and work you guys have done.
Alright, commissioner, do you have a motion for agenda item number six?
I think my largest concern and maybe this is, I don't know, the, less of a question on what we can do cuz I don't, I think the answer is probably nothing. Um, but I was reading over the security section and I know, I mean, I've lived in many apartment complexes and gates really don't do anything, but um, security cameras don't really do anything either. Um, and when you're putting in a high in-density area like this, I worry about, the biggest thing being car break-ins, which will almost all like assuredly happen. And the only thing in the apartment complex that I have lived in has ever helped um, is a security guard that patrols at night. Um, and I actually live right by this, where this is going in. I'm one of the adjoining neighborhoods and my, my largest concern would be just security. Um, but I don't think, and maybe Scott, if you don't, there's nothing we can, no kind of clauses um, to ensure we can have like accurate, like um, applicable like securities on-site, right? And so we still, meanwhile, no, right? No, yeah, that's a wrong question, no.
Uh, no, I mean, that's getting into how they operate their business.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yeah. We wouldn't have a security guard, but we met with the chief FIPS today and in addition to the security camera, another thing we talked about was having a license plate reader, um, which he's a big proponent of and he really thinks would help deter crime, just visit, you know, it, it's a high-definition one. It makes it apparent like who's going in and coming out. Um, and then we're working through other things where we can partner with them, but that's, that's the best we're gonna do. And we, we understand your concern. It's been raised in our due diligence, so. We're gonna own the property for a really long time and we really stake our reputation on like the properties we own long-term and we're gonna take good care of it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item with stipulation of the correction of the address and consideration for relocation of the trash receptacle. I have a motion from Mr. Meyer, if I have a second.
Second.
I have a second from vice chair, Commissioner Chavis. All in favor? I oppose?
Hey.
Motion passes.
Thanks, guys. Really appreciated. Very good questions. Thank you.
And guys, like Commissioner, like Commissioner Leonard said, thank you, guys. You've, you've, you've answered a lot of our questions. Um, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you very much and we'll uh, be working with the Public Facility Corporation, so we'll be around a ton and we're happy to talk to you about anything with the development. Thank you.
Alright. Moving on, this is agenda. A regular agenda item, considered discussion impossible. Action on coordinating sign plan for fifteen-seven-two-twenty-one US Highway two ninety. Mr. Scott.
Alright, so hopefully this one's a little easier. Uh, so um, this is a new business. They may already be in operation. Um, it's just a, a function of our sign code that if you're a business that operates in more than one building, that you have to have a coordinated sign plan for how the signage will be arranged on those various buildings. Um, also coordinated sign plans are required if you have one building with four or more tenants. Um, this particular business, they do operate out of two buildings. Um, so even though, you know, they just wanna put one sign up, they have to go through the step first of this coordinated sign plan before they can apply for permits. Um, so you can see there's the diagram there of what they're proposing and what would be permitted under their coordinated sign plan. And uh, we're just recommending approval for this one. Uh, it is discretionary.
This is, this is a write-off of two ninety, right, Scott, right before past Kimbrel Room?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's definitely closer down towards, getting towards like Elgin-ish area.
And it's two buildings or is it just one?
There was an existing home that they converted to an office and then they built the larger warehouse, which is what they're placing the sign on.
I move to approve agenda item number seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard, second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by
A second.
Commissioner, Vice Commissioner Chavis, second by Commissioner Leonard. We adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-two.